Meeting to order stands with flag. The two agents.
Yeah. And two of them, which just has one nation. In this call. Justice.
Thank you all for coming. We have a few things on the agenda tonight. It's Ryan and me. Yes, the Maria More Park. Talking through these thoughts and ideas and Brian and him. Ended up with effort. And so we're here to some thoughts and ideas.
Great. Thanks. Uh, Kim and I and Chris can involve as well. Started the initiative to um make some improvements on the parks, uh, both Maria's and More Park. Called Lovers South New Lovers.
I, I don't, I'm not sure that it's not all Maria's and More Park. There really was never a, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that, that area, we've all had ideas about things that we could do there to improve it. Uh, including signage, uh, from all points of access, especially Main Street. Uh, so that people know that it's back there, they could just walk by it. Um, the entranceway, the walkway, the approved, um, lighting, trees, shade trees, benches. The ability to display artwork there on an evolving basis, uh, all these different things. So. We asked, uh, Brian to lend his opinion and maybe put a proposal together to design some things. In accordance with what we were looking for. So I'm gonna just wanna add.
Yeah, we just, we talked about, um, though, all those things. I think the first step was, uh, the landscaping. Because we don't, we didn't wanna add, um, any artwork or, you know, we wanted to show where things were gonna be first. Um, and especially, you know, with the, I wanted to do pavers because the rocks just always come out of that road. It's just, it doesn't look very nice. So if we could do some pavers, it does not feel all the way up, but just in the apron area. Uh, maybe, you know, we could have something that we could, uh, you know. People could donate or people could, you know, give back to the village that way. Um, I don't know how many that will be. We don't know what that's gonna look like, but if the first step was the landscaping, see what kind of trees and how that would look a little bit nicer. And then the next step would be, um, the art, the pavers and the signage.
So that's where we're at now, but we brought Ryan in, we met him on site. I talked about, um, those ideas and our goals and what, so we have vision, but we want, you know, professionals' opinion. Shaping. So, uh, would you wanna, you know, talk about?
Yeah, so, um, landscaping, I've been in the town for thirty years, been a pillar to your events. And I hail out of Bion. But, uh, when I met Brian and also Chris, they showed me all the concerns and there's just, as a, as a small landscaping. Uh, you know, has to oftentimes stand back and look at all the big, the big pictures. And I'm getting all these little pieces from everyone. And so I think, uh, with confidence, I could tie them together into something cohesive. Because I think you got the heart behind you, playing the spaces for the Maria, Maria Z, Z more park. You made the entrance. And everything's there. It just needs some, some love. They're bringing home.
What would you, what would you propose along with things for something other than writing?
So, um, gave Brian a proposal. Uh, if, if we are retained for this, I, the price has a village. Sort of, uh, friends and family, um, rate. Uh, but it involves a lot of work. It's not something I could do for my kitchen table. So I need my staff and, you know, the whole office here. Um, to produce something, but it would take, uh, you know, uh, four to five weeks to pro- pro- produce something that I can present to you. But this is, this is your love, your passion too. So it's, it's not gonna be my vision as much as I want it to be, uh, your passion.
And what you.
And so we need to get some time, but we need to get started with somewhere. What's the price? Where we go, you know, vice points, we don't even know what.
Uh, proposal printed out or? We got it a while ago, so.
Yeah, I haven't. And I forgot what it was.
Yeah, we circulated.
Okay. All right.
And, and thank, thank you, Brian, for the generous.
Oh, no, you won't. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, win-win.
I tell you about a tricky situation too, because there's not, the entrance is not that wide for Main Street. So to add trees and art and things would be, we need a professional help on planning that, you know. It doesn't make sense to have the trees that need a lot of maintenance or the art that doesn't fit there. So.
Yeah. 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 Well, we need to figure out.
You can scan this and. Give it to the trustees and consider it and get back to you. It looks, it's, it would be a good idea to consolidate all the ideas and have one, uh, one final product.
Yeah, Michael, when we get some, I would have some sort of presentation up forward. A great picture of that. A number of work, if you ever see people with that position. Whatever we do, you go.
And with the rotating art, something that, um, I contacted someone at the parish art museum. We talked about different ways to, um, you know, to, to put it up, whether it's on a fence or a case, a boat. How it would look, also including the school, where maybe the elementary school, middle school, high school. They have some kind of contest or the seniors who have a portfolio could just play it for a certain period of time, also local artists. It doesn't have to be just from the school, but I think it will bring people there, uh, because they'll say, oh, my work's in the park. And it will bring them there to see it. So I don't think we need a lot of fun, but it would be nice to set a timeframe and some ways. And, you know, um, yeah.
Awesome.
Right. And there'd be an installer at the parish art museum, um, so they can help with what, what could fit our park once we get an idea of how much space we have.
Anything else? Anybody else on that one? Okay, but we'll go back to you. Was, was Brian involved as well in the entry signs for the village?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's a separate topic. There, there, our next topic is the, uh, we were approached some time ago by the, uh, Knights of Columbus Rotary Guanis, uh, groups to have their logo displayed along. Uh, with our entrance to the village signs at certain locations. And with that in the idea of configuring all the entrance signs and the couple of signs that we had billboards. And consolidating them and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, were you, did you have a separate thoughts from that or?
Did not watch out of, um, the, um, different signage and, um, key points for welcoming visitors to an area.
Yeah, one of the things that I'll reveal now. One of the things that we were thinking was to, um, kind of parlay, uh, that with, you know, Maria's and More Park. And spanning outward from there. So signage design there that could be consistent with new signage at the entrance for the village. So, um, so when you're on Main Street and you wanna enter the park. You could do sign design there, but also for Lovers, you would need a little signage to, you know, because there's access there. And then also in between the two and the parking lot, we want to come up with a kind of a comprehensive, um, sign plan for that whole area going in, out of parks. And then we thought we could take that design and expand it outward for the entrance signs.
Okay. And Matt, just off the top of your head, how many entry signs should we have in the village? There's six total. Okay. Sure, that's all. Okay.
I think you're right.
There's not every road coming in that sort of.
Yeah, you got these spots on highway and I'd like, uh, pass a clock. I see, he might has two.
I think it's six means.
So those would be of a similar sign and.
Style.
What I love. Yeah.
Yeah, it's something that using Bill's logo, but maybe kind of modernizing it a little bit, keeping that old school West Hampton. Seagull. Logo.
Modern. That was.
It's a modern Seagull.
Yeah.
Whatever that means. Yeah.
Okay.
But that means it will look, it won't look out of place, like the, the font, the theme would match or welcome signs everywhere places. So we just keep it consistent. Uh, it'll be recognizable too, that is a village park.
So we're doing it for free.
That's. To talk about signage for Maria's and More Park. I do need, I need something that, you know, something that is almost like a grand recognition that I use to the other ones that you don't have to read it. Even if I can only.
With the logo being key.
Yeah, it's something, yes. Keep it a stage.
Uh, anyone else, anything else, Matt? Or? That's it. Good. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next thing on the agenda of these special events, uses L H property from the chamber. Farmer's market, uh, for applications in here. Okay. They list May third to November twenty second. And I would like them to again add November twenty second to May third. That same location, they're gonna have permission to use out the, uh, five. Uh, vendors as well. I'll ask her to amend that. Any other comments on the farmer's market, on the board?
Are they doing the indoors?
It's still. If they traditionally renewed it for the outdoor only. The indoor, they really didn't need a permit except for they started having outdoor vendors.
Okay.
So because it was internalized previously. So that's, that's why that goal snapped in the middle of winter happened.
Yes, okay.
So, uh, yeah, so we're trying to prevent that from happening again. Sidewalk sales, they replied to May third and fourth to coordinate the spring fling, which is May third. Thing, thing, at least are well aware, we had, didn't have any issues last year. I think it went really well, the same approach. Anything else from the board, questions? Okay. Did we what? That had an affiliated five K, but I haven't, that's not. We haven't received an application for that yet. Anything else? No, okay. The bocce arena, um, they had last year, but I think they've extended the hours. And the timeframe, May first to November first, and it's five to nine P M. So I don't see any, things more than function, I don't see any issues. I don't. Mondays. Okay. And then the, uh, Burbank Art Show is May twenty fourth to twenty fifth. And that's traditional events from the Great Ball as well. And we didn't have any issues on it. The windmill will probably not be fully completed by then, but the, uh, the, uh, works. Smaller, uh, because they won't need as much. And we may, we're hoping we'll get the landscaping, uh, started in that timeframe. We're still hoping for an early June completion date.
Nice.
Okay. So those are all good. Any questions on special events for the chamber? Okay. Uh, next thing, chairs, tables, music permits, applications and sales, display applications. We have several that we did not approve without initial approval list because of a couple of things that they had from changes. From what they had last year. Wanted to have a sports session event. Obviously a lot of people here for that, and that's a good thing. Um, also if there were violations, and we had a few, um, places where, or entities that had violations, uh, last year. And for those people that had violations, I would like you to realize that I've reached out to the board. We haven't spoken later yet. But I would like the board to contemplate that if there's one that is a persistent violator. That they incur some consequences rather than just paying a fine and moving on. Uh, my, my initial proposal for the board was initially if you have violations in the previous year. You'll get approved if you have the same application for the next year, but the application will go into effect with each person. And again, you have violations, the next year, then you won't go into effect in July. And in three years in a row of violations, you will not be approved. The board has the latitude. So there are consequences for people that violate consistently. Now, if it's one off, of course, uh, there, there won't be more latitude and understanding. But, uh, for the rules and our expectation as to be acknowledged, I don't think it was a good idea either. So it's, as I said, it's something the board is contemplating. And it could be reflected in these rules or maybe the next rules up. Basically, where it is, it is a thought, and I think it's a viable alternative, uh, personally, but. So with that being said, I'd like to go through and approach each applicant with their change. And give the input to the board. Those have my charge. So Beach Piggy, is there a representative here on Beach Piggy? No, okay. Their change was minimal. They wanted to change music. Instead of Thursday and Saturday, or Thursday and Sunday, they wanted it Friday and Saturday. There's still music on two days. And I didn't have a big issue with that, but I wanted the board to have the opportunity to weigh in.
The other music that behind you.
It's a separate, a separate application.
I do the same day.
He is, um, your. Last one. He doesn't do it consistently.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, if he has a group to play, have the music up there.
I like it. And going to the side, I'm just wondering if that's.
Right.
A lot of.
His tend to be, and he does tend to be sensitive to the other, other situations around. And his was, and he doesn't have it on people. It's not consistent, I guess, is the best way.
What he does.
What he does, yeah.
Okay.
It's a nice added feature when he does it, I think.
Yeah.
And we develop.
It's a nice area.
Yeah.
Not having issues with, uh, there's a need to be a sort of community, like, now they keep it down.
Yeah, they, they didn't have any violations or anything, so I, I don't see any, any issues with the Beach Piggy. Okay. All right, uh, next one. Caffeine F A. Um, Main Street, they're asking for twenty eight chairs. Previously, they had nine tables, eighteen chairs and eight bar stools totaling a twenty sixth. The twenty eight pulls them up to the maximum that we allow, but in consideration of. Their.
Well, a couple of years ago, imagine, two years ago, we looked at, um, getting ready. Out of the board, we're not proceeding as much times. So there's no outdoor dining, it's all proceeding in support. At that point, the board said that whatever you had, consistent with continuing, but any increases should, uh, swear. Other approvals if they have. So Caffeine is a, is a sixteen seat or less coffee shop, it's a food shop more so than a restaurant. Says that they have a twenty six, we granted them a twenty six previous year. But increases aren't, uh, the board, within the board's power to, to give an increase, but that would be inconsistent.
What we. You gotta remember that right now, don't.
Okay.
We don't need an increase. That might have just been a mistake.
I think that was, I just. This is the activity. You should know everybody that I have, uh, an agenda from last week, an agenda from this weekend. Now we have four P M today. Give me a, uh, full speed here and there. No, okay. Don't give me chance. Let me make this. All right, so those places, that one. Uh, next one would be Daffodils Restaurant. And that's asking for the same, what would be hit request for change on the music, I think. Uh, Tuesday through Saturday, five to eleven P M, Monday dance. Two to four, hoping that's musician. Yeah. Four P M.
Yeah. I was, I was just gonna watch.
Yeah. But I. I did. I have a teacher on there. On my, please. No, I. I think that's. See, acoustic only, exactly like what I have in my chart here. Live music, live back video, Monday through, Monday, Thursday, Saturday, next, acoustic only. And then Thursday through Saturday, it's eleven P M live dance. And then two to the four, which is actually the number of people in the band, Chris, that.
Yeah.
I'll get to the four. He's bad. Yes, there. Okay. And if you're a wedding, it's just five to eleven P M. So the code is for eleven P M at night. Outdoors.
Yes, right.
Uh, any other comments from the board on that one? Ron? Okay. So that should be no problem. Okay.
What is the seating? I'm sorry. It's like.
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
On this chart, it says twenty four, I'm running it.
And it says eight tables and twenty four chairs.
I think it was twenty six last year.
It's, I'm gonna, I'm just interject quickly. Is the parking seat clear now?
Yeah.
And as, as the guidelines were formed, have all the, like, the, no, no, still big time problem.
Well, according to the various, the, uh, I'm trying to go sports, part of the study said, overall. The front is, we can find it.
Yeah, we can do that. So, uh, and so it's just a paper party scenario. Is, we have a mess of a rural rock and pretty few seats, and I would love to be able to get us, get us there at some point for permanent seating.
But that's.
Without being.
That's not a thing to any.
That's according to the health department and the armed police.
Right, which not affiliated, it doesn't reflect your.
Permanent seating with the village. Yeah, I would have to go to you guys.
Have site plan and all those.
Yeah.
Right. Which, I mean, the. They just kinda, you ask for it, they kinda give it to you.
Yeah.
Without looking at the footprint of the building. I mean, they could give a large volume to a very small building. And not blink an eye because they're just looking at the.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, with our permanent seating allowed right now combined with our seat all after our timing, it adds up to permanently gave us so. Uh, I guess what I'm saying is that I'm just asking the last step for us to get kind of, I guess, we first incoming.
Yeah. But I do.
The site will happen.
It's not gonna have site.
And it also requires the trustees to allow for increased flow because we still are.
We can't. Any, any increased flow, even though they already said that we need bar, bar flow. We have to do a natural number. The act, we have schedule orders for two years. The flow we can accept.
So do you need one more year or something?
Perhaps once we get everybody, we have got everybody hooked up.
Yeah.
And we're still in the process of hooking up. Once everybody's hooked up, then we have two years of flow monitoring.
Gotcha.
And then we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
That's a little confusing. Okay. So we got our dentures, correct? One. Excellent. Uh, next one, Lovers Deli. Uh, we received the application after, uh, our last meeting, but they're asking for the same thing. So I don't see any issues with that.
Nothing like that.
That's upward as well. Okay.
I think.
Uh, local provisions.
We have over fun shows.
If you continue using the new.
Got it. Oh, fun shows is lower view. Sorry, I, uh, I was going off the. Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry. If we just want, I need a. Uh, local provisions. Um, correct, last year had three tables, six chairs, asking for five tables, ten chairs, and then outdoor. Okay, good night. Then two, five tables, ten chairs. And it's.
The food shop, similar to our sixteen seats, less per health fund. It's not really seating. They are expanding to the space next door and they're putting additional restroom. So it's, it's, it's up to the board if they can fit or not. I don't know if you'll experience. That alleyway, alley of chairs.
A- as you go deeper south into it, it widens. So in her space, she's expanded southward. Uh, so the expansion kind of increased her footprint going in that direction where there's more space. So, I mean, I think. I've looked at it. I think the five tables is reasonable for that space.
As long as it doesn't. Peak pedestrian.
Yeah. She, last year she was in a tighter corridor and it expands as she expanded in her building.
They really have thirty two tops, because that is not a lot, is not enough.
Yes.
My building and.
Yeah, they have to be narrowed to the tops, but now she has extra length with those. So I have a lot of, yeah, she's got more storefront now, so she can be in front of that. And, um, and a lot of people get, move there to go and like to take it outside and sit down.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's a good, good plan.
Yeah. Try it for a year. If it doesn't go well for some reason, we can.
If we notice, uh, you know, that it's tight there, then cut it back.
Agreed?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is one trick pony. Eight tables, sixteen chairs, two umbrellas. That's the same they had last year. A flying act, but we had our other. He's got his history. We okay?
I, now you're back to this.
Okay.
Can we skip over fun with the whole? I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me go back.
I would just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back. Chair is gone, sorry. Puncheroes, fourteen to sixteen seats, same, it's just a late. So no, well.
And they, they have extra space now that they got rid of the, uh, separate. No, it's not there, it's pending there, but there's more, you're just confused with space in general.
Drafted.
Right. A walkie make it entering, it's hot tight.
Only other property, not in the villages right away, but they are sixteen seats.
Six. So you focus time. So that's. Overexperiority here. Wait a minute. Provisions for one trick, are we back to one trick? Say, no issues. Say, no issues, correct?
Yeah, doing a good job there. They really contain.
Yes.
They have mediation, their space, so.
Okay. Also, that one's good. Uh. Saltwater is next, and seven tables, twenty-eight chairs. Last year, fourteen tables, twenty-eight chairs, this year. Um. I'm a little concerned about the tables and the narrow going around down towards library and narrow pathway. Impeding pedestrian traffic, uh. In that area.
Are they two tops serious about that?
Sure. Okay, so we, we've always been very careful, there's a, there's a mark in the middle with a cementist. We've always been very careful to keep those tables and chairs very close up to the building and make sure that we have that pathway. So that people come up and down my road, yeah. That way instead of more foot, four or five foot.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're always tight there, I've always seen them tight to the building.
We've been very careful about that, keep it tight to the building, make sure that we have that four or five foot panel where people can walk up and down. And I keep an eye on that, we haven't really had a problem, people getting up and down. It's, my main concern is pedestrian traffic being able to be.
It's been pretty stalling, I mean, I, I see it all the time and it's, it's kept tight to building, I've never seen any structures there.
Okay, so and the number of seats are remaining, it's just still twenty-eight, so. Anybody else?
It, it's the same, I am, I had last year and this year, and the, have seating in the back on the patio and also on the. Working tonight, open the community scene.
The tables all in the. Where they don't, don't give. Trying to figure out the layout, how the tables play out.
Right, so the, the layout that I have is the four tables in the front and three tables on the side. So that was, and we, we had that in the plan last year and it's, it's the same plan this year. We didn't approve the plan last year. It never came, it was scheduled, I guess, but. It might have been there last year, so we might have seen it, but we, it wasn't approved. Make that way. And also the ones in the front and the side would only be in the right of us, so we need to have insurance and some.
Okay, tomorrow, it's a hard topic.
Yeah, I have the village as unnamed insurance, as if they could hold them up with insurance, so the village is covered for that area. That reminds me.
You have any other issues with it?
I would just, we had violations last year, so.
Right.
You're gonna.
This is one of the instances where there were violations, uh.
What were those?
Uh. The specific, I, I don't have a chart, I don't know if it's handy, um.
I, I think that, I didn't realize it was an actual violation, I know that I did an email from the building department. And I think the confusion that I made was that I put in a plan that had the seatel that had. It got, it started, and now the building's in the plan, and now I got approved, and they said that I wasn't supposed to have them, so.
Well, maybe that's part of the confusion that Mr. Hammond is referring to. So we have something different, we have something different and it was, so there was confusion from that.
In an effort to clean things up, we were giving the same rules year over year.
Uh.
Mr. Bernstein had expanded, but that didn't really get captured last year. And then at some point, go unfortunately, here on Saturday, and there was tables that didn't match the approval. Just, I don't think anyone's trying to, not, you have the tables, just trying to just be a little. Not pretend like the, the, the rules don't exist, like we want to have approvals that, that the board approves and then we stick.
Resistance, we just want consistency.
So, uh, so we're okay with this, which is what he wanted last year and had last year, but was in violation while we approved. But once that again this year.
As long as, as long as pedestrian traffic is not impeded. And we're not going in excess of what, uh, is allowed by the health department.
It's not six to seven, four tops in the back patio, and then there's all these seats around the front too, we're, we're over that, we're over the. I don't have a problem with all two tops, if they're all two tops, or, you know, you have four, four top and the two top comes away, we just.
We have a layout, we have a layout.
I have it on the plan.
That's, that's, that's see what it looks.
If, if we could get a cleaned up layouts, then it was more than. I think that would be helpful.
Helping for our.
Give me a layout, like, and just visualize it, but it's fun for me to pitch it exactly how you want to do it.
We've been using a copy of the copy.
I, I, I could redo it.
Yes, thank you.
Fresh final plan and what you're looking for and, and. That's. Unless. Right. So, anything else on the salt lot, tables and chairs? Okay, then there's the salt of consideration, music. And, uh, I thought you're asking for, well, being able to only go since eleven. So that extra hour from eleven is, will not be, uh. Allowed, um.
Next year, you could do interior.
Next to interior, if you're, it would have to be closed, in, enclosed interior. But because of your, you have a very nice design, where actually it becomes interior in a way, so, uh, but if you want to go to midnight. Then it would have to be fully closed.
Yep, we have to close all the doors.
Yes, exactly. So, uh, if you want to go for eleven, about eleven P M. rather, instead of midnight, is that, uh, you have a moment?
Is that okay to have eleven P M. outside and twelve inside?
Go for an extra.
It's good to go.
Yeah, so. And establish.
Your plan.
Indoors from eleven? Well, tonight, indoor. Okay, we can stipulate that in the, uh, in the resolution when we do the final approvals and have everything all set, okay? Correct, anything else, any other questions? Okay. So now we're on. Uh, Mahudamas, you know, the seatels and chairs. There are tables, chairs in the front, requesting four tables, that's eight chairs. And there are five foot extension of the village right away, and they provided a map. Is that me, this or? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's definitely in the right of way, but as long as you can, the insurance is, uh, this was an eight seat, once you're that prior to. Fine, so I, I have no problem with this in the front, it's, it makes more sense for this particular occupancy as well, since they're facing the front and they can. Have a better eye on where they're serviced. Versus the chair in the back, I think this, I think this is a cleaner problem. I, I like their four tables and chairs. But I'm here to answer questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, any other board member have any?
Quite a lot, or have.
It's, uh. I think we're good.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. I mean, you need the insurance on that, like, if that's.
Right, because it's on the village right away, we need.
I have that, actually, the only question I had when I was just going to vote is, uh, the indemnification, is that the, do you provide the, the sign?
We'll get a forms that are during snap, I think I have a.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's okay, that one's good, and then, um. We have. Yours, where I said, I had yours in my head, but where to go? You see.
Yeah, it's not really yours.
Oh, sir, okay, now I got you. And it's because of request. Um. One Saturday per month, May through September, six P M., nine P M., light band, mic clock. Were you planning on indoors or outdoors?
Oh, well, weather friendly.
The weather friendly, okay.
Band, one is a four piece band, and one is just, um, a guitar player and a singer. So we have our front, our place room, if the weather's not warm, and then we have our patio, if the weather is nice, then the layout's okay.
Okay, so would you do both on the same night?
No, 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 no. Two, each bench is two, two nights.
Oh, okay, gotcha, alright.
Yeah, so four, four, for the total season, four, for the nights, for the total season.
Okay, gotcha, understood. And if it's indoors, you'll make accommodations by moving the tables.
Moving the tables out of that room.
Yeah, out of that room.
Right, that would be empty, everyone would be empty.
Board, any other questions? Good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Tony musician, same as last year. I think it's an issue. Okay. And did I forget anybody? This is. Oh, display.
Three million guys, and I think they had a.
They use their team to sound you. It's on their property.
It's on their property and it's, it's off the sidewalk. So it's just an out, outdoor display and it's not in your site, so that's why they. Right.
Yeah.
Full life.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. So that's good. Oh, the full history shuffle. Yes, the same as last year, we didn't have any issues with that last year, it was. Brad, there wasn't.
No. No violations.
Explain what's out.
Yes, it wasn't all the time, I don't know.
Yeah. Right, right. Okay, good.
Yes.
Alright. So you finished all of these, the new.
They, they were covered by. We have a list of people who are approved as last meeting. These were the applications we received since that meeting or had the change of order or violation.
Okay, alright. Anything else on the? Okay, good. Next, you know, on the agenda is the time review and wine application. Um. Good, how are you? Well, we received, uh, I guess, uh. You. Application was deemed incomplete because some things were not filled out, uh, because of our new code. So the new code required that it is, there's admission being charged and that, uh. They stipulated admission charge and that a portion of the proceeds is going to some, uh, not-for-profit. And I think you've elected the ambulance, West Hampton ambulance, correct?
Correct.
Um, and it stipulated a certain amount, uh, if you recall, I emailed the board, uh, that considerately thought that was appropriate and. But now that those things have been submitted, the only consideration would be the, uh. The amounts, if they're appropriate or not, that's, that, that's all I can see. And I guess, uh, Mr. Angel, this is the first time we've had this with our new code. So we should, in my mind, expect some form of, uh. Of. Uh, paperwork that they did in fact donate to the ambulance, the specified amounts, and how after the fact are.
I'm really not prepared, I have to look at the code.
Okay, well, it's because it's on the great lawn, it's C P F property, and they are not, uh, it's not allowed to be strictly for-profit, uh, events. And it's one of the six events on the great lawn that we're allowed to have. Um. So our code we made dovetail with the C P F requirement. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, South Hampton, uh, it's a good event over there. The, the following application had to include that check from the previous year to get the next year affirmative.
That you've handed to.
So. Okay.
You should send me a copy of the application, then, somebody, maybe Denise, send me, email me a copy of the application.
Okay.
And I'll compare it to the code permission.
Right, and we'll come up with a. Process to, to validate the, uh.
Is there a verify? Is there a, um. Uh, words escaping me, um, like, uh. Uh, it's posit. They, for an event like this, like a security, a security.
Yes.
Posit, yes. Why don't we just, I don't know if we'd have to do anything with code with that, why don't we just make a contingent upon releasing the security deposit proof of the payment? Just in case you don't do it again next year. Right, why, why, why put it to a year later and just say, okay, you know, yeah, here's your donation, here's your security deposit back?
Okay.
Right?
This, this is our first time going through this, so that's.
Yeah, no, this is a good review, because what we also realize, we do events differently than any other company, so we get stylists. Restaurants. For over two years, we've given thirty-two thousand dollars to participating restaurants. I heard of, or in that.
Yeah.
Um, but I know we need them to make the event successful, and if being here free. It's not that, you know, it's, it's gonna be alright. But the benefit as well.
Right, we definitely had a good experience with your event, I mean, the police and cleanup and, uh, setup and organization.
I agree with them.
Okay. So, uh, no, we appreciate the ease with which it is to, to deal with this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Uh. You just have to. You have good security. But with the new code, we just have to get through, get the process established and then it'll be.
Absolutely.
Sorry, what's, what's the date again?
Uh, June fourteenth.
And the.
Obviously, we. Windmill is finished by then, but we'll see.
Yeah, I also showed you that we flipped the tent.
Yes, I saw that, the map.
Latest. Construction's starting. But, uh, if we were putting the band shell there, everybody would be looking at it, so all the pictures and everything would have it in the background. If it's, hopefully it's.
Old thing was high standard last year?
Yeah, uh, we have two hundred seventy-five feet from the sidewalk all the way to where the, the ropes. It's.
And you used to go parallel to Main Street.
It would be, it would be tight there.
Yeah.
But this is actually a nice showcase on the new addition.
Yeah.
To the great lawn.
Right.
So, we're glad to do that. There really is no, no change, the same tent will fit, and, uh, we'll just move the band shell over to Hornier, so everybody will be looking that way.
Great.
Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
That was good. Try to make that. Our marshals part-time, so we get the tent perfect and.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot of times we're running around that last week.
Yeah, the tents are. Yeah, and everybody was very cooperative, we had somebody come down, um, I guess they had the survey, we just wanted to make sure everything was nice and clean. Underneath for that power that comes out to where the tree is here. So that's another thing we just wanna, we'll, all time again, just to double check.
Actually, we do, because of the windmill, we have a new power panel. Uh, that, uh, that's now available, uh, for.
So that power, that tree still?
Near the street, uh, near Potunk, between the windmill and Potunk, there you'll see another. Or maybe that. So.
Yeah, because we're bringing professional electricians to do everything, so we have one electrician come in, do everything.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. So the next item on the agenda is, uh, fluid phone system proposal, with fluid imagery. Has come with a proposal to, uh, replace your phone system because we are currently using light path. And we've had some. Two of them, and in my mind, they're very expensive, and we are looking to upgrade. Fiber optic at other places, optimum, to my surprise, offered to give us a proposal. To compete with, uh, light path, and I thought they were affiliated companies, but anyway, they are, but they're, now they're competing with light path, but. Anyway, Sergeant Cloquel, Police Department, looked into this for us, he's very, uh, technically savvy. And came up with a proposal that I sent to the board, essentially, if we subscribe. Essentially, if we subscribe our village phones through fluid imagery. It'll, there's a cost factor of twelve thousand and another thousand, uh, but if paid within a year, we'll break even with what we're paying LightPath. So I thought it would be worthwhile, uh, to move forward with that and at least try it for a year or two. And see how it goes, because to me, LightPath is extraordinarily expensive.
We just have to look at their contract, because they think there's a third days or.
Right, we have to figure out if, how much notice we have to give LightPath, uh, so we don't have any, uh, monetary consequences. But other than that, I think, uh, it would be a good idea, any board members have questions or good things? Sergeant Clokel, we told him not to come. He's overworked.
The only difference is Optimum, uh, LightPath guarantees near one hundred percent uptime, which means it's operational nearly a hundred percent. Optimum doesn't necessarily guarantee that, but their systems traditionally are up a hundred percent, I just wanted to mention that as a side note, that's actually the difference between the two companies.
Expanding their a hundred percent uptime, we've had some difficulty.
Yes, exactly.
We have their. Yes, it's through that, so, yeah. Okay. Alright. And the next item on the agenda is, uh, the chief, D C J S contract, it's a renewal contract. Not a renewal, it's something we're gonna be doing new with D C J S, you're asking us to establish an escrow account with them. Well, we need to keep about seventeen hundred dollars in the escrow account, uh, we pulled that out of the investigations line. Basically, one transpired, we, uh, we did some system upgrades to restore the mobility between the different platforms we have. During that upgrade, one R fingerprint, uh, Ricky machine, which takes fingerprints from most criminal submissions. During the software upgrade, we also transitioned to a civilian application. In past, what we would do is, if we had non-squirm members, because we don't do investigation for police officers, we put that out to somebody else. For our non-squirm personnel, other personnel at this, our headquarters, uh, we're bound by some FBI and, uh, state regulations. Where people have to be finger. Uh, by enabling this, the, uh, civilian transactions that we can now submit, we have to pay for that, which we did on the other way. We had sent it to Riverhead to a private company, get a voucher from Village Hall, it became a little bit tedious there. So we're gonna keep it local now by being able to do those civilians fingerprint submissions, but there is a cost associated with it. That's charged with D C J S, which is why they want to have an escrow account in place. And we would replenish it as it's, has it on. Yeah, it'll be coming out again, it'll be coming out of the investigations line, which can handle this. Any questions from the board? Alright.
I heard you need a boat.
Keep going. Okay. That concludes our agenda for the regular meeting of the work session, if you have any questions, it's got to be more, actually. So, uh, I'm giving a motion, I guess, to go into the executive session. You come first here.
We close this meeting, open, uh.
The executive session closes. Okay. All favor. Motion to go into the executive. All in favor? So we're good.